So we are going to begin with Mr. Colley for introductions. As guests just passing by.
Ms. Zona.
And just so you know, the last person who will answer will be the first person on the next question to keep the mic.
So let's go to the guy in the far first. My name is Lance Colley. I want to first thank the League of Women Voters for inviting us all here tonight. Thank everyone for attending. This is a very important forum. I really appreciate the time that you have taken and have given us. We'll try to get through this quick. If I miss any protocol, it's just because it's out of big reason. It's not out of disregard, I promise. I've lived here in Waverly, Texas for a little over 21 years. I moved here to open up a business and start my family. I think the differences between my opponent and myself will be easily seen between an interested voter. I encourage you to go pass this forum. I hope you get a good taste tonight and some good information to make your decisions. That's all I ever ask anyone that I'm involved with is get knowledge and get down to it. I was born in Waco, Texas, raised just outside of Dallas since I graduated high school. I've been in and out of the hill country several times, front making home here as a young man. I went back to Dallas and... That was 30 seconds after that, huh?
Did it take you long enough for it to take its form?
Could I have 15 more seconds, thank you. Back in Dallas, back in '83 is where I fell in love with the restaurant business and being in business for myself. It's also where I fell in love with my wife for 22 years. I put up with her for 26. As you can see, I don't rush into the decision. We moved here just six months after our first one was born with a borrow of $5,000. Was able to put our single up on the house and make a home here in Waverly.
Thank you. Mr. Haley.
Good evening. Thank you for voting this forum. We certainly appreciate it. A little about myself. My name is Tom Hayden. I've lived in Waverly for 39 years and I'm real, real close to be considered for permanent residency. I'm not an old timer, but I'm getting there. My background is I'm a retired vice president. I served as mayor of Waverly for four years and decided that I wanted to help the city in any way that I possibly can. My wife and I have been married going on 49 years. We have two children, two grandchildren. Also, I was president of the Waverly Water Supply Corporation and I am concerned about one of the things that's major to our area is water and we need to conserve it. I want to...I'm Lions Club past president. I've served this community in different capacities and I appreciate your vote this next election. Thank you.
Mr. McCollum.
Thank you all. Thank the League of Women Voters for coming tonight and hosting this tonight. Appreciate that. I'm Matt McCollum. I currently hold a place two seat in Waverly City Council. I've been there for two years. I appreciate that position that I've had to help our government as well. I feel like I've done a very good job and nothing that...nothing I haven't helped to change really, but a good job. I'd like to also introduce my wife and my daughter and my son and my sister tonight. They're here. They play a large role in this. With any of them getting elected, it's hard to go home and not...whatever your situation is, and not think about some of it and be frustrated. So they take a lot of the run. 30 seconds, okay, wrap it up. My single biggest issue going forward, the odd and adorable part of our government, is to try and get a sewer system for the city, try and get a sewer system for the business district. Thank you.
Mr. Thurber.
I'm Steve Thurber. I'm the current place foreholder. Want to thank the League, Carol, Roxanna for hosting us and thank you all for coming out to join us for this event. My wife of 27 years, Susan, and I have been in Waverly for it since 1997 and I have been on active in the city government since it was incorporated in 2000. Served on various board positions from that time until I was elected to this position in 2008. I've enjoyed my four years on council and I look forward to another two years with your support and your vote. I will get that opportunity. Thank you again for coming.
We're now going to begin with questions since they said each of the candidates will have one minute to answer and I'll call out your names as we're going to be going in random order. But Mr. Thurber will begin with you. If you were elected to the Waverly City Council, how would you resolve the problem on the Waverly Square of sewage disposal without including either Cypress Creek or the Blanco River?
Thank you. I've been called and attending meetings of the current group that is together, the Waverly Community and Group and Association. It's a group of downtown property owners who are working together and I might add, working very well together. They're putting together a plan of action to bring wastewater to the square, to get all of the square to the downtown area, to get the septic systems offline, get them into a...city sewer system will be transported to the Blue Hole site as the current plan and expand. I think this is a wonderful idea. It's very, very profitable to help businesses when you have someplace to go and your patients and customers don't have to walk three blocks and cross a busy street to get you out of this. It's a big help, not to mention it will save our streams and our take the septic systems from leaking into Cypress Creek and into the Blanco River.
Mr. McCollum. If we're elected to the Waverly City Council, how would you resolve the problem on the Waverly Square of sewage disposal without including either Cypress Creek or the Blanco River?
Thank you. If I'm elected or reelected to this position, I will continue to work. At this point, I've had 54 meetings trying to farm and build sewer incentives and give the sewer district a building. The district that we outline right now does not include any taxes with anyone that's not in the municipal management district. Municipal management district is the business area of Waverly. It's not your residential neighborhood. It's not across the creek. 30 seconds to go. I will continue to do that whether I'm elected or not, but it's certainly help if I'm elected to keep that going. I've worked hard for it. I will not just let it go aside and again emphasize to you that it is not a tax that will be imposed on anyone else beyond those in the district.
Mr. Colley's next. Mr. Colley, if you are elected to the Waverly City Council, how would you resolve the problem on the Waverly Square of sewage disposal without including either Cypress Creek or the Blanco River?
Well, I think I'll answer it similar to the previous gentleman is that we have to work towards...we have to work hard towards this, but we don't have to deal with emergency situations. We have to explore every option. It's not just the amount of money that will be sent one way or the other, but if the amount of money that is spent causes property values to go up too much, then it's going to cut out the lawn pop businesses in town. It just will. It will bring in deep pockets and there are...I've gotten a concern from new people in that overlay that they with the predominant plan as of now, and I understand that we haven't landed on anything, we're exploring everything, I think that's good, what they have seen as a predominant plan, it will put a lot of them out of business and have to sell their property.
Mr. Haley. If you are elected to the Waverly City Council, how would you resolve the problem on the Waverly Square of sewage disposal without including either Cypress Creek or the Blanco River?
As many of you know, as mayor, I resurrected this search for a sewer system for downtown because saving the creek and saving the river is one of our major priorities that we need to undertake. I am totally not sold on spending 13 to 15 million dollars to put in a full blown system. I am interested in putting in a system that will service the people that are on the creek. The only hesitation that I have is I don't want it to affect the business owners that are there already or put anyone out of business because I'm concerned with the growth of the city has control and let's take care of our own people.
Mr. Haley, do you feel that the city of Waverly needs a property tax? If not, how do you propose that revenue for the city be obtained?
I am adamantly against adblocker tax for this city. We don't need it yet. One of these days we might, but we don't need it this time. We're doing pretty well on sales tax. The revenue is up this year. I know it's a volatile situation to have to live on it, but we need to adjust our style of living in this city to live within our means, but I will never recommend our vote for adblocker tax inside the city.
Mr. Colley. Do you feel that the city of Waverly needs a property tax? If not, how do you propose that revenue for the city be obtained?
To be quick and concise, I do not believe that there is a need for an adblocker tax. I believe that there is a need to promote more small businesses of the sales tax base. I think that the sales tax base can provide us and that is how the city was set up, to work off the sales tax. If we give in to that attractive beast of an adblocker tax to finance our city, it's going to add cost to every home in the city.
Mr. Thurber. Do you feel that the city of Waverly needs a property tax? If not, how do you propose that revenue for the city be obtained?
You know, I've been doing this. This is the third forum that I have done with you folks. This is the third time we've answered a question for a slight change, but my answer is that when the city, citizens of the city decide, feel that there is something that they want badly enough to impose a adblocker tax upon themselves, they will let us know. They will tell me, the mayor, tell the other city council people, we need, we want this, whatever it is, and we're willing to pay our fair share and pay taxes. It's the system of pay as you go and pay for what you get. That's the way I feel about an adblocker tax and I'm certainly getting an adblocker tax until all other sources of revenue are exhausted. So, thank you.
Mr. McCollum. Do you feel that the city of Waverly needs a property tax? If not, how do you propose that revenue for the city be obtained?
Right now, we do not need or want a revenue adblocker tax. There's no...none of you, any of you have said, please propose an adblocker tax. Until you do that, the city council is not going to do that. It's a scare tactic. We're not about to do that, not without census between the public, property, businesses, everyone alive, all together. If this won't happen, not without...how would we regenerate or increase adblocker property tax? Businesses are the single best avenue we have. Build the businesses, build the business base, you'll increase your sales revenue tax for that, no other way. Thank you.
Mr. McCollum. If elected, what would be your number one priority for the city of Waverly and could you achieve that goal within the current budget?
Yes, I can. My number one goal, as I stated earlier, is the sewer. The proposed sewer that we're working on is not 12 to 13 million dollars. The latest numbers we have this week, we're looking at 6 to 7 million dollars. And our wildest guess to comply with the Texas Water Development Board was 8 million dollar worth, nothing more. So that's substantially less than 12 to 13 million dollars that we already handed them out and we don't think it will take that. What was the second part?
And could you achieve it in the current budget?
Sure, because it's not going to affect the city budget. Everything that will come out of this sewer plan, this sewer system that we propose will be driven and paid for by you, no one else. The city budget will not be affected in any way. Thank you.
Mr. Thurber. If elected, what would be your number one priority for the city of Waverly and could you achieve this within the current budget?
Well, I have to agree with McCollum that I think the first priority is the sewer system for the downtown business area and he has told you and I think I mentioned earlier on it as well, that will not cost the city any revenues. It will be totally supported and paid for by the folks who are using it in the downtown area. That's the number one priority and fairly close behind that is the final phase of our treasure, Waverly's treasure, the Blue Hole Park. That's phase three or phase two of the park will open on May the 19th officially with a grand opening. You all are certainly invited to that. Come see what a great job that park and the city and the Blue Hole has done and no cost to the city. It's all done by volunteers, grants from various folks including the county, Texas Parks and Wildlife. That's building my two projects that I want to see come to fruition and neither one adversely or adversely affects the budget of the city. Thank you.
Mr. Haley. If elected, what would be your number one priority for the city of Waverly and could you achieve this within the current budget?
Well, I think we're all in agreement that sewer is a main problem here running in our creek, but that's not our only problem. We have streets that need to be paved, repaired, traffic controlled. We have $3 million worth of streets that need to be taken care of and our budget didn't call for this. Our budget, our reserve account only has $600,000 in. We need to build it up. We need to take care of all these items and I don't want to be just a one agenda type councillor. I will look at all of our problems to fix them and they're not fixable very fast, but we will have to work on them for many, many years.
Mr. Colley. If elected, what would be your number one priority for the city of Waverly and could you achieve this within the current budget?
Well, my number one priority would be the number one priority on the agenda for the city, obviously it's sewer. I was asked to run for this office, this will be my first office to ever run. I talked to many people trying to make my decision whether it was time for me to run. One of the biggest things that I talked across the board politically to people, had the biggest diversity I could get, was that they felt they needed someone in there that did not have one point of view, that looked at everyone's point of view, considered everyone's point of view and didn't take the stance that if you don't agree with us, you don't completely understand the issue. There are many understandings of each issue and that doesn't negate one or the other. You have to take into account every person in the city.
Thank you. Mr. Colley. Our beautiful Waverly will continue to change. How will you address this by ways to create population?
The way that I will address it will again, listen to the citizens, listen to the new citizens, to the old citizens, see what they want protected, see what type of lifestyle they want protected. Do not sit back and gather your point of view and take off on running start and say this is what's best for the Waverly Valley. It has to be in consideration for everyone concerned.
Thank you. Mr. Haley. Our beautiful Waverly will continue to change. How will you address this by ways to create population, et cetera?
As we all know, the people that are coming here are coming for the very same reason that I moved here 39 years ago. It's a wonderful place to live. It's a wonderful place, wonderful place to raise a family and we've been...Waverly has been very kind with us. We need to make ordinances easier to work with. We need to make sure that our city hall is friendly and the citizens are helped in every way possible if they want to build a home or move here and we need to encourage businesses to come here and give us a need so our citizens won't have to go to San Marcos and spend their money.
Mr. McCollum. Our beautiful Waverly will continue to change. How will you address this by ways to create population, et cetera?
Waverly is changing. New people are moving all the time here. I meet them weekly. I understand why they move here and I hope that they leave their old ways where they came. I see that constantly. Our planning and zoning is the crux of how we're going to control and manage our growth. The Planning and Zoning Commission is one of them. They have a substantial responsibility to plan and manage our growth. That's the emphasis that I would place on this continuing is that we appoint good planning and zoning commissioners and we recognize the growth. The council will vote on it, but the input, the majority of it comes with planning and zoning first. That's what I believe that and I want to see that continue. Thank you.
Mr. Thurber. Our beautiful Waverly will continue to change. How will you address this by ways to create population, et cetera?
Thank you. I think that we need to be sure that we have a strong set of zoning and planning ordinances. By strong, I don't mean restrictive and unfair. I just mean that we need to be sure that people, when they come here, can sustain themselves and the infrastructure that we have can be sustained to provide them with the quality of life that we have all come to enjoy and love and visit. I know we have water shortages and we have to be very careful of that. I think that we know we have a drawdown in the aquifer that we can't sustain. We have a minor quantity of sources of water. So it's kind of a catch 22 for me because I don't want to stop the growth and development, but at the same time, I don't want to ask someone to move here and have them get here and not be able to enjoy the lifestyle that we have come to enjoy here. Thank you.
Mr. Thurber. The city has a small budget for road repairs. If a flood event were to wash out River Road, how do you suggest we pay for its repair?
That's a good question. That is one of the issues where without a large fund balance, we would have to rely on some other source of revenue to fix that road. I'm sure we could discuss with the county getting some help from them and we may have to find some way to finance it with bonds or loans somewhere. Frankly, that may be one of the issues where the citizens come and say, we really do want River Road, so how do we get to River Road? Then the discussion begins of how to finance it. So that's a real tough issue and we used to...one of the issues that we can look at possibly is at one point in time, I know we've got insurance policy for just that event.
Thank you. Mr. McCollum. The city has a small budget for road repairs. If a flood event were to wash out River Road, how do you suggest we pay for its repair?
That's a fear we have. Every council member has that. We don't have enough money to repair River Road should it wash in. How we're going to handle it is going to be tough. Fund balance we have depending on course of gravity of the washout would absorb the fund balance we have. That's going to be one of those issues that when that happens, and it's not just River Road is something, there's three or four predominantly have here in and out of our community that are very vulnerable to that and we simply don't have the money for them. When that happens, we're going to have to...we may lament if we don't have a property tax there. It's going to be something we're going to have to wrestle with. There is no answer we have to my knowledge on the table at all of how we will deal with that. It is a fear we have, but we don't have an answer.
Mr. Colley. The city has a small budget for road repairs. If a flood event were to wash out River Road, how do you suggest we pay for its repair?
We pay for it with the insurance policy that the city carries on. There's an insurance policy that the city carries on that the city administrator, as I suggested, said was paid up to date. So I think we've taken good care of that. If we don't know that it's current, then we go find out if it's current. We reevaluate and make sure that the insurance dollars that are provided will cover today's costs because I believe with...believe that insurance policy was bought back around '02.
Thank you. Mr. Haley. The city has a small budget for road repairs. If a flood event were to wash out River Road, how do you suggest we pay for its repairs?
The only way we can pay for washout, we have so many low water bridges. If a low water bridge washes out, you just don't put it back. The federal government will make you build a road above the flood plain and that's going to...even 1492 Low Water Bridge, we're talking about millions of dollars to replace that bridge and do it according to the rules now under FEMA. The only salvation that we have is this insurance policy and I agree with Lance. We need to make sure that we've got enough funds available to repair this bridge, put it back and under this state right now, funds are going to be hard to borrow if you don't have an adblocker tax and I don't advocate that. So let's keep a pretty large insurance policy in force to do what, to make sure we're ready for a decision.
Thank you. Mr. Haley. What is your position on Waverly becoming and presently is a no growth city by means of overregulation?
Well, as I mentioned a little earlier, I think our regulations are a little bit tight. We need to treat these people coming to town. You don't control growth, you manage it. These people are coming. You're not going to stop them from going to our city. So let's welcome them because that will be part of the operating base for the city. Let's do, build our city, but let's build it right and as on this city council, we have an opportunity to develop our city in a way that cannot hurt things because we're still small. I think that we need to not control again, but to manage it and make sure business is business and homes are home and take care of the people.
Thank you. Mr. Colley. What is your position on Waverly becoming and presently is a no growth city by means of overregulation?
I don't want it to become a no growth city. I don't think that it is at this point. I think that some of the ordinances are convoluted, they're tough to follow, they're tough for the city staff to follow. I deal with the one main ordinance, that's the sign ordinance. I've been in many discussions, many debates with the city staff down there. I have not been on the wrong side of a debate about that ordinance yet. Most of them have ended in please check with your counsel, with your legal counsel, which they end up calling me back, but that's one of the biggest complaints that I hear from long-term residents, new residents, is that it's tough to navigate the ordinance system. We need to make it easier. We need to make it more concise. There are some overreaches, but I think that we can contain those and fix it.
Mr. Thurber. What is your position on Waverly becoming and presently is a no growth city by means of overregulation?
Thank you. I've heard that term as well many times and I don't believe it. The current city council has appointed a COVID task force that has over the course of the past roughly six months have gone to review virtually all of our ordinances and made recommendations on a census basis for any issue, any changes that they felt necessary that were cumbersome, restrictive, not easy to follow. They came up with a queue, which the city council has acted upon those as they came to us. So I don't really think that there's the problem that some folks have. I know that if somebody has a problem with the city, well, they go and tell someone else they have a problem with the city, there's ordinance and it takes this and this and it gets blown out of the ordinance. I tell it to councilman McCollum and he tells it to Mayor Haley and he tells it to Mr. Colley. By the time it gets down to Mr. Colley, it's 12 times worse than what it was when it originally started. So I think our ordinances are important and they have been reviewed. Thank you.
Mr. McCollum. What is your position on Waverly becoming and presently is a no growth city by means of overregulation?
I don't believe that's true. I think the ordinances that we have now have served us well.
it originally started. So I think our ordinances are important, and they have been reviewed. Thank you.
Mr. McCullough, what is your position on Wimberley becoming and presently is a no-growth city by means of overregulation?
I don't believe that's true. I think the ordinances that we have now have served as well. We started out with a rough patch, we've gone through that. It's time we go on and continue to mature as a city. The idea that some harbor, that we won't have these ordinances, that we don't need them, that's false. Again, what Steve just said, God's mental, lobby growth, code review board, they've taken every ordinance, there was nothing off the table to them. Not a single ordinance was prohibited from them for reviewing, discussing. And I believe as late as yesterday, they're coming forward with four simple changes, nothing of any magnitude. I'll stand by our ordinances until we have to survive. No one has come to me and said demonstrably that our ordinances are prudent for moving here. There's always mitigating circumstances when you ask and when you find out. Thank you.
This is our last question, and then the candidates will have an opportunity to add closing statements. Mr. McCullough, what is your long-term solution for the water problem for Wimberley?
Thank you. A long-term solution for the water is we've got to get more water, or else the people that continue to move here need to bring their water with them, and that's not, that hasn't been working out yet. We tried, or maybe tried to do water, we can't do it later. I think right now, the water that we're going to have to get will have to come from the central aquifer somewhere else. It's not, if we continue. I don't know how much growth we want to have before we drip the lever on that, but it's not going to be a lot. Presently, we use, the business district, we use nineteen million gallons a year. It's a lot of water. We've got to find a way to do it. I don't have the perfect answer for that.
Thank you. Mr. Thurber, what is your long-term solution for the water problem for Wimberley?
I think it's a combination of a lot of things. One is finding an alternative source, source of groundwater for the area. I think it's going to take a lot of conservation, rainwater collection, for one, and widespread and commercial use of rainwater collection is going to take legislative action from our state legislature to revise and revisit the water laws that we are all living under now, which were developed a long time ago, and situations are much different now. So it's going to be a combination of a lot of things, and it goes back to my statement that I think we need to be sure that we can have, we have the infrastructure for water resources, sustain the growth that is coming, and we want to come.
Mr. Haley, what is your long-term solution for the water problem for Wimberley?
First, I'd like to state that Wimberley is not out of water. Wimberley is short of good drinking water. We have an aquifer below us that has never been tapped. We'll have to treat the water, it'll be more expensive. I sat on the Wimberley Water Board for thirteen years. Wimberley is fortunate, we sit on a beautiful hole of water. Now, it's that way towards Blanco is not that fortunate. We do have a hole of water down there that we'll continue to use, but in the long term, we're going to have to bring in surface water, whether it's from Canyon Lake or Sims Borough, or from El Paso, or from outer state. We need to plan for years and years ahead, because if it doesn't rain or continue to rain, our aquifer will continue to go down, and one of these days we'll be in trouble. But our water supply is down there if we want to treat it and use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Colley, what is your long-term solution for the water problem for Wimberley?
It is a complex issue. I think there's going to be need for many different methods of attack to the problem. One of the things that is happening now are private corporations. They are doing their own testing on the deep wells. They're doing their own drilling at their expenses. They're searching it out. There are a lot of private organizations doing this research. Some of the things that have been mentioned are viable additions to our water supply. I'm a realist, water's going to get more expensive here. But I was at a Trinity Groundwater Commission meeting the other night, Wimberley, to touch on what Mr. Haley said, Wimberley is looked at as the most rich, water-rich part of Hayes County. There are other parts growing more fast, or faster than we are. They're keeping up with it. We've got to do the work and find the water.
Thank you. The candidates each now have two minutes, don't feel like they can breathe. We'll start at the far end with Mr. Thurber, and to close your lines.
Thank you. And thank you again, please, for hosting us tonight. Thank you all of you for giving us your time tonight. I know American Idol's on tonight, so you probably all want to go and watch, see if it's kicked off. Thanks for coming. I think that what I bring to the table is years of experience with city government, years involved in city government from day one. Since they've incorporated until now, I've been involved in various committees, and was on the original Economic Development Advisory Board, serving as chair until that group was disbanded. Then volunteered on the Ethics Commission and served on the Ethics Commission until I was appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission, upon which I had to resign from Planning and Zoning Commission when I was elected in 2008. I've been a registered voter in Wimberley since the week I moved here in 1997. I voted in every single city election from that point on. And as a point of comparison, my phone wanted to compare, and he has done none of those. So experience counts in this job, and I think that, I hope that you will appreciate my commitment to the community and my volunteerism. I commend every one of us at this table for doing that. I ask for your support, I ask for your vote. Early voting starts for Monday at 7:00 a.m. I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you. I also have served about seven different boards and commissions, starting in 2003. I've done just about, I've done planning and zoning, and building code, and economic development, wastewater. I feel like I know the issues, and I'm not just a single, I think I'm a single-issue person. Sewer is, sewer is paramount. I'm not going to back up from that. But so are other issues. The roads are a big issue. How we address that, we can only put at the most several hundred thousand dollars a year. Mr. Haley said we had about a three million dollar road balance. That's right. And if you break down what we can put at it per year, two hundred thousand dollars for a three million dollar debt, we've got problems. I continue to work toward that as well. That's a solution that we work with and we struggle with on the council continually, is how to invest and how to budget plan. Whoever gets elected, you've got five more meetings before we go back into an annual budget cycle. Five meetings before we pick that back up, and we start wrestling how to incorporate the money that we have. We have about a million dollars. It goes real quick. I'm not adding any taxes, I'm just telling you that you've got a lot of needs, a lot of wants out here. Fortunately, you as citizens have not made a lot of the maintenance. So to balance the true belief, to not sacrifice to live here, some of you, most of you accept that when you move here, that you don't have the amenities and luxury that you had from a metropolitan or a larger area that you moved from. We will continue to work on all those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Haley?
I want to thank the big Wimberley voters for hosting us for us. It's been very good to get our names and our faces and our ideas out to the public. I really, I guess I'm running on my record. When I took over as mayor of this city, our fund balance consisted of about six hundred thousand dollars. Two months before I left office, our fund balance was a million dollars. Out of that, we paid cash money for a city hall. We don't owe a dime of it, it's ours. We spent, we took two hundred fifty thousand dollars out of there, out of the fund dollars, to repair our roads and our streets. And some of that has been done. Like I say, we have a whole lot more to do. And I know in the future, as we go into the sewer projects, it will be some cost of the city, because the city has to participate in it. It's not just an individual thing, and we've got to take care of our citizens. I want to support small businesses that are here. We want to keep them. We don't want to run them off and have big business come in here and take their place. Also, I thoroughly support managed growth, not stop growing, we need to grow continuously. I'm going to, I want to run the city, or help run the city, in the manner that I did when I was mayor. I think I have a good record, and had a good council work department. Our city hall is friendlier now, because it wasn't friendly when I took office. But I think that it can still, there's still room for improvement, and I'm not talking about getting rid of regulations. I'm talking about modifying it so it's able to live on.
Thank you. Mr. Colley?
Thanks, everyone, for having us all and being here tonight and listening to us. I just wanted to reiterate, I wanted to encourage everyone here to go past tonight. Ask your friends, ask your neighbors, ask the people that you agree with, that you don't agree with, about the issues, about the candidates. I guarantee you that you'll find out more from them about each one of us than you will have had here tonight. I want to invite you, and anyone that you want to invite, to on the Sunday and Mondays from four to six. I'm setting aside that time to be at my place of business, the restaurant on River Road, to discuss any issues, answer any questions that anyone has. I'm open. I want to hear from everyone in the city. I love Wimberley. I fell in love with Wimberley before I ever lived here. I raised my family here. Two of my children have been born in Wimberley. I am one of the luckiest men that I know, and that I am the only man that I know that was lucky enough to catch each one of their children in their own hands and their first fall into this world. And two of them were done here in Wimberley in our home. This, I want this home to be a place that my children can come back to and recognize. I think it's been a good start. What I do bring to the table that is different is the lack of city government experience. That's one of the things that drew me to the race, is that most of the people that I talked to said, we need some new faces, we need some folks, business owners, the ones that have been through the good times and the tough times. If you find out anything about me, you know I've been through, but I have been calling